So why don't you go ahead? All right. Good evening, everyone. It is seven o'clock on April 29th, 2020. I'd like to call our school committee meeting to order. Thank you for joining us. I'd like to start out by doing a roll call attendance of our school committee members. I'll start. Brett Argul is here.
Lisa Brown is here. I'm working on my face.
Okay.
Becky Charniak is here.
Ellie Grady is here.
And I do not see Julie yet. Okay, so hopefully.
She had a little bit of trouble last night, but.
Okay. All right. Well, hopefully she'll join us. I know she was having laptop troubles a couple of weeks ago or 10 days ago, whenever we met last. So and we got a small enough group, so maybe just everybody else want to just chime in as well, especially if you're going to be speaking here tonight.
Cindy Sosha, primary school principal.
John Bell Elementary School Principal.
Brian Delaney, middle school principal.
Josh Romano, high school principal.
Donna Souza, director.
Jordan Mulder, school committee.
Hi, Julie.
Courtney Keegan, business and operations manager.
Okay. Kevin Maynes, superintendent.
Hey.
Julie Erkhardt, Assistant Superintendent of Students' Court. I'm having a little bit of a computer issue. I keep being knocked off and my camera's not working, but I'm here.
We can hear you.
Heather Moore, running for school committee.
Yeah. And then a couple of guests, speakers tonight. So Joe, why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself? Like, I think most of us know you.
Jill McKenna, state representative.
Okay. Hello, Mr. Fatman.
Hello.
How are you?
Hanging in there.
Good. So I think everyone knows Senator Fatman as well. And then Tracy, I think we all know you. I'm not sure if Mr. McKenna and Mr. Fatman know you, but.
I think we've both run into each other. I'm Tracy Newberg, field director with Massachusetts Association of School Committees.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So we do not have our student representatives. It's still public comment and communication. I don't see anybody here on the call that is not here for something already on the agenda. So we'll move through that and move to our superintendent's report. And Mr. May is the first thing on the agenda is our discussion with Senator Fatman and Representative McKenna on COVID-19 and impacts of on state funding particularly, but I think we'd be interested in hearing from you on, you know, the state's response, you know, overall, even outside of funding and outlook on things. So, Mr. May, I'm not sure if you had any teed up to kind of open this.
I'm having Neely's problem. I keep freezing up also. That's the second time I've frozen. No, basically, just to welcome Representative McKenna and some of the fat men. And we had spoken a couple of weeks ago and we moved the meeting back because they were hoping that they'd have more information relative to things like MCATs, testing in the stimulus package and so forth. So we were glad to oblige them and they're here tonight. So I throw it to them to sort of share with us the information.
Excellent. Joe, I don't know how you want to operate. If you want to go first, if you want me to go first, we could flip a coin. Doesn't matter to me.
I'll just ask that everyone else maybe mute right now if you're not speaking. And then you remember to use the, you know, if you want to ask a question, use the the little raise your hand emoji on the side there and we'll get everybody kind of called in order. Thank you.
Joe, do you want me to begin?
Looks like we lost Joe.
I guess I'm going to begin then.
Thank you, Mr. Fatman.
Thanks, Mr. May. Appreciate you getting us involved in this and to the committee, thank you for inviting me and Joe. I know we appreciate it. I know it's sort of that time of year where we have done this in the past. I know that it's a very different circumstance that we find ourselves in. And so I think first I want to wish everyone the best of health and well wishes. It's obviously a very difficult time. The last time we were talking about doing this, I had asked Mr. Mayens if we could delay it, mostly because I was looking to hearing what the consensus revenue hearing was. And, you know, the presentation that was going to happen from Chairman Roderick's and Mekowitz on Ways and Means and some of the experts on their panel. And that was delayed because of technical difficulties. That did happen, I think it was two weeks ago now. And the presentation was pretty sober, to say the least. So one of the things that I would point out first of all is that, you know, it's kind of, we really don't know what to expect. You know, I can speak at a more of a macro level than a micro level. But, you know, the estimates at that revenue hearing were that we're looking at FY '21 at a $4.2 billion budget deficit potentially. The revenue numbers for the month of April came in about $250 million below benchmark for FY '20. There's still a belief amongst the people that I talked to, I've talked to Chairman Roderick's a few times in the State House, that we're not going to have to worry about the FY '20 budget as it exists for two reasons. One, we think we're in line. Two, the hope is that if we're not, we're not going to have to tap into the rainy day fund, the state stabilization account, which I think is all good news. There's no question about FY '21 having to tap into the rainy day fund. To give you again, high level information, so a part of that $2.2 trillion package that the feds had passed was about $2.65 billion to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. There was approximately $130 billion total for the states in that package. But it was not for operating expenses within fiscal year budgets. It was for additional expenses relative to the COVID-19 pandemic. And, you know, you're seeing some of that money being expended right now. The governor had announced $130 million for nursing homes and elder care facilities to address that. My understanding is that's from the $2.65 billion and that the governor has basically got complete control over how that money is expended. Obviously, most of the money that's expended in state government happens through the budgetary process in the legislature. We got the power of the purse. So, you know, going in FY '21, I think the biggest question is, when do we actually come up with a budget? And what does that budget look like? The things that I'm hearing right now is, at the very least, there's going to be a 1/12 budget. The House had come out and said that they expect to have a budget proposed and passed by July, or I think a budget proposed by July 1st, which, as we know, is the new fiscal year. The budget debates have been kicked out several months. My hope has been that the budget process would be completed by the end of July, which is aligned with the way the legislative session is going to end. We are scheduled to end on July 31st at 11:59 and, you know, midnight essentially. And so, you know, I think there's going to be real challenges. I think one of the things we have to watch out for is what the next step is for the federal government. They've talked about a $750 billion package for states. At least that, you know, that's been in the public discourse for, especially last weekend. You know, I read today that there's probably $750 billion on the table to help states out with their budget deficits and municipalities. You know, so that will be good news. So I think a combination of federal assistance and the state's rainy day fund, which is at $3.5 billion, will be tapped into to see how well we can weather the storm. The estimates on the deficit, you know, I mentioned 4.2 billion dollar deficit. It could be larger. You know, it could be $7 billion. That would be about 16 and a half percent of what the FY '20 budget is right now, which is significant. So it's sort of a wait and see, you know. And the process on how the budget plays out is something, I'm on Ways and Means in the Senate and we don't know right now how that looks and how it plays out. So there's a lot of question marks. We have more information today than we did three or so weeks ago when we were going to do this. Unfortunately, a lot of it is not very good information. We have some of the questions about MCATs and the school year answered, which, you know, is helpful. But, you know, we're really concentrating now on what does the budget look like? And at this point, I'll turn it over to Joe. I know Joe is certainly going to weigh in.
Yeah, and I had some ill timed technical difficulties, but that allowed Ryan to kick off and really do a good job. And he touched on a couple of the points that I was going to bring up, one of which is the, I guess, fourth iteration of federal aid, which Congressman Neal has talked about. And that is going to be one, assuming that there is an agreement and that the House and Senate ultimately pass something that will be geared very largely towards municipalities and state assistance. The difficulty certainly for Douglas will be in competing with the 350 other cities and towns in Massachusetts to make sure that you get your fair share. And that's certainly where Senator Fatman and I will be keeping a close eye on this package as it gets released and making sure that we're doing whatever we can to ensure that the proper portion of that money trickles down to every school district, including Douglas. And the other piece certainly is the budget. And we're in unprecedented times. And I think Ryan certainly talked about some of the difficulties. And one issue that is really key on that is that we don't even in the House have a procedure for how we would conduct remote business without being in the same place. We need to ensure that that is in place before we're able to take up a budget, whatever that budget may end up being. And there was some back and forth today to try to implement emergency rules for operating. But there were some real problematic pieces of those rules that were put out by House leadership. And so that process got delayed until either tomorrow or further down the road. And without a clear operating procedure, we could have a budget number tomorrow and not be able to take it up. Just as a bit of background, the other mechanism or kind of mechanics of the budget that are going to be tremendously different this year is that normally, right now, we'd be in the third day of House debate on the budget. After the House finalized its budget, it would be kicked over to the Senate for their opportunity. Obviously, we are not in the third day of House budget this year and we don't know that number. So there has been some talk. I don't know what level of certainty, but there are some discussions about a joint House and Senate budget moving forward. All this is somewhat speculation. And as Ryan said, we're in a wait and see approach, just as much as you are. So I hate to present such ambiguous news, but that's the reality of the situation that we face. We don't know the numbers we're going to be working with, the timeframe or the procedure. So it's an incredibly challenging point in time.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we anticipated having, you know, some ambiguous information still tonight, just, you know, based on where we are still with in regard to the, you know, COVID-19 pandemic and things still being on the, you know, the rise or at least just starting to plateau. So and any thoughts on when the House and Senate might work out the, you know, the idea of doing a combined pass of the budget versus two separate passes at it? Is there any talks of deadlines set to at least make that decision?
My gut would be if we're able to resolve the emergency orders in the House and get an operating procedure in place, that there's probably a stronger appetite to maintain the House than Senate approach. But that being said, we're also anticipating an abnormal budget where the revenue number's going to be so low, I don't, we haven't been told specifically, but I think that the understanding is that there's not going to be much by way of earmarks or special funding or things like that. It's going to be a bare bones, you know, budget to get the ball rolling for states and for the towns, rather, to be able to do their own municipal budgeting. But I don't think that there's going to be much by way of special projects, earmarks or allocations like that.
Okay. It's good to know. Any other question? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd second that. You know, the last time me and Mr. Mayens were together, we were doing a reading day, I believe. And we talked a little bit about the potential for some sort of resources like Joe and I had put together for the Chromebooks last cycle. And, you know, I just, that's one of those things that we're definitely not going to be able to guarantee for sure. But one of the concerns, you know, like as ambiguous as things are, one of the things we know, the sales tax is down $1.5 billion. You know, withholdings taxes from employment is down $1.2 billion. We're losing $100 million a month on meals taxes alone. That trickles down to the local level. Trying to remember, I think non withholding taxes are like $720 million down. You know, so it's significant. And that's something that, you know, the thing that breaks my heart is there's a tremendous amount of suffering on multiple different levels. And I don't know, I hope that that turns around quickly. But one of the things that Massachusetts is confronted with is the way our economy is set up. It's highly based on higher ed, medicine, healthcare. And those are industries that right now are just taking a whack. And, you know, so usually in a recession, we see Massachusetts bounce back more quickly. The question is, is that going to happen this time? You know, we have an effective unemployment rate right now of about 18%. We have in my office alone, 100 people, cases that we're helping them with. It's 101, where they have not been able to get through to unemployment and we're trying to help expedite that. So it's just, it's significant. That can't be underplayed. And, you know, that's one of the things that I wanted to emphasize. And, you know, my hope is that the bounce back happens fast. There was a projection at that revenue hearing that happened two weeks ago about how long do we think unemployment rate drop could happen? And they said by fiscal year '21, they thought that 440-ish thousand jobs would be restored. But that still puts us at an effective unemployment rate of about 7%. And the unemployment rate nine weeks ago was less than 3%. So it's very concerning. And, you know, obviously, we're going to do everything we can to advocate for the towns we represent and try to make sure that the Chapter 70 and the pilot payments and everything is where it needs to be.
Yeah, I think we all understand that. I think you are, I'm not sure if either one of you held these offices back in 2008 for the Great Recession. I think you're both newer than that, right? So, yeah.
Blackman in Sutton. So I remember what that was like. That was, that was really rough.
Yeah, so I was just trying to compete, you know, you know, do some comparisons. And I know it's a much different situation, but I don't remember the, you know, the high level economic realities of that. I do know that locally, you know, we did see our Chapter 70 actually drop on a year-over-year basis. I think from '08 to '09, some. So, you know, they weren't sticking with the whole harmless back then. I think we saw our unrestricted government, general government aid drop even more. They can attend to 20% range. So just, you know, curious if you, again, I know it's hard to tell and it sounded this is worse. So I imagine both those things are going to be in play this time around as well.
Yeah, I would imagine they certainly are. One thing as far as looking at a recovery in some of the articles I've read is that the government sort of learned from 2008 and 2009 and the recovery from there and really tried to go big early to prevent as much pain as possible, which we all know is not possible, but to mitigate the pain as much as possible with the stimulus package and such dramatic increases in the eligibility and the funds going out to unemployment. And especially with the payroll protection program, the goal is to have businesses and employers ready to rehire and ramp up as quickly as possible and not have totally lost the ability to have a quick economic recovery. That's the plan. Who knows what the implementation will look like and how long the whole situation will drag out. But, you know, that's kind of why some of those relief efforts have been rolled out the way they have.
Anyone else have questions? I know there's probably not, you know, much to ask at this point. Again, it's pretty ambiguous, but just want to open it up to anyone in the group here.
If I could jump in, Brett. Ryan, Joe, back in 2008, the federal government jumped on. And I couldn't, I don't remember the name of the stimulus that Obama put out there.
RF.
That's it.
Yeah, 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 I was going to say that too, because they did reduce our Chapter 70, but they replaced it with that, so that you were actually left.
Okay.
Reinvestment and Opportunity Act, I think it was called or something like that.
Yes. Lots of reporting requirements.
Do we anticipate that something like that might be, you know, down the road before longer?
Yeah, that's what I was referencing, that $750 billion. You know, like it became this popularized public policy debate between Mitch McConnell and Cuomo over the weekend. They were going back and forth on this idea of allowing states to declare bankruptcy, which is kind of a ridiculous statement, because if you think about municipal bond markets and how those operate, like you would rail those and that would be really bad for the economy long term. So I think, you know, you're looking at 750 billion and that's probably the optimistic estimate. There was an attempt in the last stimulus package to put in more money. I don't remember what that number was. But the hope would be, you know, if you're a Massachusetts resident, that that's $750 billion would happen and that would probably give significant aid to us. And Joe's 100% right, like, you know, 2008, the, I believe the RF was $800 billion. And that was one of the largest packages. I think the TARP money was 1.2 trillion. And then there was one other one that was, I forget what it was, like $300 billion. So, you know, we're at, we were at 2.2 trillion, 450-ish billion. You know, now we're talking about 750 billion, so it's significantly more money.
Okay. Should we assume that the Student Opportunity Act and rural aid might be casualties of this?
I don't know. I don't know. I mean, I, I think one of the problems here is because Massachusetts is a hotspot and this sort of is, you know, when I talked to a lot of public health officials, I was on one of the Zoom call yesterday at 10:00 AM with some public health officials out Boston Way and UMass Amherst. And, you know, they were talking about how chronically underfunded and underprepared the country and all states were for a public health crisis. And it's because we haven't made those investments. So this is their moment and rightfully so. And now we're going to do that, you know, because we have a tendency to be reactive to a lot of things. How that impacts the budget as a whole, I don't know. But as soon as we know, we will definitely let you know.
And a little bit of color on that. I believe it was State House News Service or one of the news aggregation sites that we get updates from had conducted a poll of what people were paying attention to politically. And issues that were normally very, very high ranking, such as gun control and education, were under 5% of responses were paying attention or were interested at this time. Whereas COVID-related legislation and policy, as expected, was in the high 90s. So people everywhere are just extremely focused, well over capacity, on COVID and COVID-related things. So I would be surprised if the Student Opportunity Act rollout wasn't pushed off a year, just kind of kicking the can until we get on a more stable footing and can kind of revisit where we are as a state.
And then the only other question I had was, I know that you guys have both done a lot of work with the Community Support Network. And with what's going on right now, I'm just wondering how, if there's anything that the school district can do to any kind of outreach that you need or otherwise related to the support network that you guys have set up for Sutton and Douglas?
Really, I would say that that would kind of go the other way. If you have a need that we can help connect you with a resource or with services, whether it's from the state or from other service providers in the area, we're hoping to kind of be a clearinghouse of resources and assistance. So, you know, we're here to assist you if those needs come forward in any way.
Good. The only thing I would mention to that is Joe and I have spent a lot of time trying to track down personal protective equipment for a whole host of different people in our area, and we've had some success at it. And it's partly because anytime we have the opportunity to just mention it, we do. So if anybody knows of any vendors or opportunities to tap into something like that, whether it be gloves or hand sanitizer, face shields, whatever, please let us know and just email us. You don't have to tell us right now. And there's been a tremendous outpouring, both, you know, from companies and private people that have done yeoman's work on that stuff. And that's really encouraging. Unfortunately, there's just not enough to go around. There's a whole bunch of different interests. And I don't know if you saw the news tonight about Walmart shutting down on 146 because 20-ish people got sick, you know? That's retail, you know? There's a group of people that kind of need help on this queue. And right now, that's not. Their local regional hospitals having tough time with supplying their doctors and nurses and medical staff with full body PPE. You know, so it's a real challenge. And it's going to make us rethink a lot of things in this country. There's just no question about that with supply chain. I wish we had thought about that several years ago, but it's a wake up call.
Well, if we can help with that, I will reach out to both of you as soon as I can.
Great. I'll just, a couple of things. So one school related, one maybe a little less. But with regard, you mentioned some of the technology that the technology helped give us last year, which we greatly appreciated in that, you know, maybe that help wouldn't be around for this year. I would just stress that as we move into going forward, you know, the possibility of us having to either go back to, you know, a remote learning environment at some point next year or even start the year with that, you know, if you guys could consider, you know, technology resources for, you know, addressing it in all districts really in our aid with that, you know, going forward.
Can I ask a question? I've been curious, and this is buried across the Commonwealth. How has Douglas performed from a remote learning standpoint with regards to Wi-Fi, access to computers and all that kind of stuff? I, I know that that's a concern amongst superintendents, especially kids with maybe learning challenges in some capacities. But that's something, you know, Joe and I are sensitive to. And if we can help in some way, we would really relish that.
So if I could speak to that kind of quickly, I would say that Donner and all of the building principals have really done a great job of reaching out to families. And if there was in fact a need for some technology, we've been able to cobble together. Donners like MacGyver get those iPads that have resuscitated and got them out. So I think in principals, please chime in. I think that at this point, we have met and are able to provide the technology needs for the students who have requested it. The big issue, of course, is that families like yourself, where I'm with multiple kids at home, if there, if there's, you know, a desktop in an iPad and there's four, there's four kids in the house, it becomes a bit of a challenge to get access to the technology. You gotta, you know, like I remember being the youngest of the three boys. So we never watched what I wanted to watch on TV ever, because I was the, I was the younger one. But I think we've done a really good job of getting it out there. I think our teachers have been sensitive to not make it the dominant part of the instruction that they're sharing, to make it a piece of it, but not the dominant piece. And I think families have, the responses that I've seen, most families have been appreciative of providing technology when needed and that they are, they seem to be okay with it. So I don't, principals could certainly chime in better than I could on this. That's pretty much my take on it. I think that we're meeting the needs pretty well. But the one thing, going back to what Brett was mentioning, is the one thing that this did become, make evident was that if we, if we had the one-to-ones at the elementary school, we would be in a vastly different position. And we would be, our students would have really good technology with them. Not that they don't have great technology, but, you know, some of the, some of the pieces that we have are four, five, or six, or seven, maybe even eight years old that they're using. So it just, it just makes it a little bit more evident, especially as what I mentioned, with the possibility of a resurgence in. So, it just, it just makes it a little bit more evident, especially as what Brett mentioned, with the possibility of a resurgence in the fall or in the winter. We'll need to, you know, try to make do with what we. But I, I, I don't think any principals have any points.
Yeah, Mr. Delaney, looks like you wanted to jump in there.
Absolutely, I, I wanted to just say, the Chromebooks that were provided by you gentlemen to the middle school in the fall was manna from heaven. And we have a 98% engagement of middle school students online. We had to completely revamp our school in a matter of, of four or five days, from a brick-and-mortar school to an online remote learning environment. And the great news was, we had the capacity, and those Chromebooks, along with all of the other technology investments that town has made, and the online learning platforms, we were ready to make that shift. It, it was, it was, none of us were trained for online, we're, we're, we're people, we're people, people, right? We're, the pedagogy is a connection in the classroom. But the idea, we had the infrastructure, we had the platforms, and we had the connection with the kids, and we went from an 80% engagement rate the first two weeks. We're at a 98% engagement rate now, and that's because we can, we, we, we had the technology to do it. And again, I, it's, you, you talk about supply chain, and maybe getting caught behind the eight ball. We weren't in the middle school because of the money and the investment that you were able to make in our community, and no, we didn't see this coming. We didn't get the Chromebooks in case we all got locked in for eight weeks indefinitely, but because you gentlemen went out and got this for us, these children are continuing to learn, and our teachers are highly successful, I'm incredibly proud of them, but we could not have done it without the platform that you provided, so I just want to say thank you.
Well, we appreciate hearing the feedback, and it's encouraging to hear that it's working well.
Had a cameo appearance from a cat.
Yeah, she's, she's been a regular at these meetings. Thank you, Mr. Delaney, I'm not sure if anyone else wants to jump in, regardless of just our, our technology needs and how things are working?
That cat just stole my thunder and stepped all over my lines.
I know, that was good stuff too, Mr. Delaney.
Thank you very much, yeah, thank you, starring the cat.
One thought I did have is that we are in such unique times that now personal technology can legitimately be considered an emergency resource. So, that potentially might open up some grant opportunities, or, or other funding avenues, or creative uses of emergency funding if necessary. So, just something that I'm certainly gonna keep my eye on.
That's a good point.
And I, and I think your question was more specifically to, you know, the, our, our technology resources with, you know, with this. But I, I'm just gonna speak to kind of my own experience, and, and what I've been hearing through just our social media platforms around here. I, I think things have gone very well to this point, I think in particular the high school and, and the middle school, because of our, our Chromebooks that we have there, they were able to get up running very quickly. Primary school and elementary school did, you know, were, were very, you know, ready, at least initially, with, with paper to send home, you know, even before the state declared a shutdown, we were already ready with our own materials to send home to, to get us through a couple of weeks, and then quickly transitioned to more online resources to be able to provide lessons and, and materials. I know just, just recently though, I think that the chatter on, on, on Facebook at least, has started, some parents are starting to really get stressed out with, with the homeschooling piece, you know? And I think particularly the younger ages, I think, you know, and I have this in my own home, I have a middle schooler and an elementary schooler. The middle schooler, I let her run all day, she gets everything done, if she doesn't, I get an email, and she'll take care of it the next day. My elementary schooler, I'm with him all day long, getting stuff done. I'm lucky, I'm, I'm a stay-at-home dad, I don't, I don't have a daytime job, this, this is, this is my job right now for the most part. The parents that are, that are two, you know, two, two-income households that are still working, I can't imagine how they're getting through it, and I'm starting to hear a lot of stress from some of them, particularly with the younger children. So, just, just to kind of give you the, the temperature out here.
Yeah, just wanted to say about with the technology too, with like, at the elementary school, where we did call together, it's been challenging to support it. I'm getting emails, and teachers are getting emails that they're forwarding to me from parents saying, how does this work? I can't access this with this, and I had to go through the steps to say, well, okay, which device are you using? What, you know, because it's a mishmash, it's harder, and you have younger kids who aren't self-sufficient. And you, so with the two of those, it's, the teachers have been challenged, the parents have been challenged. If they all had nice, all one platform, it would be a little easier with the funding, but at least they've got something.
And that's what I was gonna say also, along with what, we checked out 40 more devices today, Donna and Scott were there today doing that at the elementary school. But at the very beginning, had we had one-to-one devices, we probably would have checked them out to every student, but because we have a hodgepodge, and we're just making do with what we have, as families have shown a need, and we've tried to give them devices, but it hasn't been a universal, here's the platform we're using, we're all using Chromebooks, here's your login, it, it's complicated things, and made it so we can't do things as smoothly. I think the teachers are doing a fantastic job with what they are doing. I know, I, from what Brett said, I think my house is feeling the overwhelming, and I think a lot of houses are overwhelmed right now with the kids trying to get the work done, and I, I think it's different with the middle school and high school, because they, they can do things a little more independently, but the primary and elementary, I think we're struggling, but the parents have to sit with their kids when they're doing that schoolwork, and that's a lot of time they're dedicating. So, we're trying to find that balance between the, the digital and the, the just remote learning, but it, it is a challenge, and we're working through it, but having devices one-to-one would definitely help us if we're doing that.
I wanted to jump in, because I actually got approached by two different parents this week, who were having, well, one was talking about crying fits and, and arguments with the kids, because they're having, they're definitely feeling overwhelmed, and some of it has to do with, they're not familiar with the technology that's the kids are using, and it does tend to be in the lower grades, although I've got my own frustration with the high schooler, but, you know, that's probably my kid more than the teachers.
There's definitely a realignment, I mean, I, I mentioned before the, the tremendous amount of suffering, and how empathetic we have to all be to, to that, and we're all going through it. But there's a realignment of value to a tremendous amount of things, and one of those things, I think, is the value of school, public education, and, and, you know, teachers, and administrators, and how you take that. There's just been so much a part of our daily lives, from the time you're, you know, young to the time you become an adult, and you don't think much about it, you know, you just do it. And now, you have to think about it, because of the, the remote learning component, which is so, so interesting.
Okay. So, a, any other questions, comments?
I have a comment to throw in there, I raised my hand, do you see it, Brett?
Oh, I do now, sorry, I missed earlier.
No, it's okay, um, it's more of a comment than a question. I think that as this goes forward, if we can, you know, I'm not any kind of professional with mental health, but as this goes forward with respect to technology, I think that it's also really important, and I have experience with the younger grades, just like, to get on a similar page in terms of the social aspect, I feel like, as a parent, in terms of the academic needs, I feel like those are certainly being met, but I do feel like kids just need that, and we all do, right? But kids just need that one-on-one contact, and when my daughter found out that school wasn't opening again this year, like, she's been a different person. So, we are fortunate that we do have some social outlets, we access Zoom ourselves privately, but I like hate to think, if there's somebody out there who doesn't have regular access to a computer, that their children are missing out on that ability to connect with each other, but also their teachers, it's such an emotional relationship, I think, at a young age too. So, I guess my comment is sort of going forward, it might be nice if we can collaborate with other communities, if they have ways that they're finding success with having that social connection with one another in schools, because I think that's just really important to their development, and being able to eventually transition into whatever the new normal is gonna be for a while, so, that's my thought.
So, I, I did figure, I had another non, at least not directly school-related. Last night, our Board of Selectmen and our town moderator were discussing our, our annual town meeting, and it was originally scheduled for May 4th, and, and they've, you know, def, voted to definitely postpone that. They still haven't set a, a new date, right now they're looking out to September, but they haven't ruled out, you know, having a June date still. Just not sure if, if you have a, maybe some, some thoughts from your other community units that you support, and best practices around trying to hold an annual town meeting that, you know, we might be able to share with our, our other officials here in town, or at least, you know, have, have you starting to think about that, and if, if you come across any guidance that you can pass along to us? Yeah, I haven't had any towns in my district that have gone through that process just yet, I know that there has been several pieces of municipal aid legislation in Massachusetts specifically passed to grant a little bit more flexibility as far as meeting quorums and timing of those municipal meetings, but I haven't had any towns go through it, but I, I will certainly kind of keep an eye open for advisories or different pieces that might be helpful.
So, I'm gonna get back to on this, Brett. I'm gonna look into the law, I am not sure you can postpone till September, and I might be conflating two things, so I need, that's what I need to check.
This question, I'm sorry, this question came up last night too, I, I think it was with regard to, you know, both elections and the town, annual town meetings. I thought the elections were definitely by June 30th, but it seemed to be a little more ambiguous on the town meetings.
Yeah, so, if I recollect the language, it's, so, the election must be held within the fourth quarter of the fiscal year 20, because that's come up in another town I represent, in Milford, you know, when we were having this discussion, and it, it's a fascinating process right now, because we require unanimous consent to pass any law. So, anybody who does, wants to stop something and show up and do so, and that takes a lot of trust and goodwill and communication. And so, I, I've served on the Municipalities and Elections Committee that the Senate put together in response to all this stuff, and I was involved with these two laws. And I, I know for a fact that the elections can't happen after the fourth quarter of FY20. My recollection on the town meeting was that it could be postponed 30 days, but I, that, I, I will find that out, and I think what it might have been is, it could be po, it, it had, had to be notified when the town meeting was, within the 30-day time period, and that it had to happen before the end of the fourth quarter, but I, my, my memory's failing me, so I will look back, and we'll make sure that we clarify that.
I think we'd appreciate that, and I think that, you know, the, the main, you know, kind of points of the conversation last night, where it seems kind of pointless to go forward with an annual town meeting, and a budget being the biggest part of that annual town meeting, if we don't have, you know, guidance from the state around what our, our cherry sheets are gonna look like, and what our funding from the state is gonna look like, and if, you know, we, we know we had some guidance from the, from, you know, the, the governor's budget early in the year, but, you know, we know that's gonna look dramatically different. So, how, how do you, how do you go forward and pass an FY21 budget at this point? We know without that, so. This is a paragraph from a one-page that I have on that bill, it's House Bill 4598, and this particular paragraph is not definitive, but it's informative, it says, "The bill also gives local select boards the option to extend town meeting business beyond the June 30th cutoff mandated by state law, and allows towns that are unable to finalize a new municipal budget by June 30th to continue operating using monthly interim budgets. Those monthly budgets can be funded using existing free cash or unexpended funds in a revolving account." But I think that, that's where we're, that's what the town's looking at currently, is, is going through, you know, July and August on, on a 1/12 budget, and even in September, and again, they have, they haven't ruled out having an earlier meeting, and they wanna, they're gonna get together in a, in a few weeks, you know, hoping that, you know, maybe some guidance comes through from the state by then, I, you know, not, no offense, but I, I still expect that we're gonna have that, it, it sounds like too, there's just too many unknowns at this point, so, I think, you know, I wouldn't expect to really have any solid numbers, I think, new numbers for our cherry sheets until the June timeframe, it sounds like, at the, at the earliest, even then it won't be finalized, it sounds like, so.
One thing to mention, I had reached out to Desi with regards to graduations, and just looking for guidance on how those would operate for this year, and they said that they would, at, at, at least at this point, guidance would come from directive of the Local Board of Health and the Public Health Agent. So, working in conjunction with them, you can put together a graduation ceremony that perhaps can respect the social distancing elements of, of, in guidelines. The second thing we asked about was funding schedules for MSBA projects, and if those would be interrupted. The thought was, at this point, they would not, the question was for the future, obviously that revenue comes from sales tax, and so that was something that we were really concerned about, because we have communities, including Douglas, that are impacted by that. So, I just wanted to mention that before we wrap up.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, any, any last comments on, on this topic?
I just did have one question, I was wondering if either of you know if there'll be any impact to the FY20 rural school aid? The second allotment payment that was to be made by the end of April?
So, the, the only thing I've heard is that there's optimism about this not impacting FY20.
And to that point, to that point, what Ryan had said, or right at the beginning of the meeting, is, we don't expect, and it certainly can change, but we don't expect to need to dip into the rainy day fund to make ends meet over the next month or two, till they close out this budget, certainly will moving forward, but we're kind of hoping that this current fiscal year will wrap before we have that need.
Okay, well, thank you, we'll just keep looking forward, I know it was supposed to come the end of April, and I, but I was wondering about that though, hey, thank you very much.
Brett, you're on mute.
Thank you. So, thank you gentlemen for joining us this evening. Yeah, I know there's not a lot of solid information to share yet, but we do appreciate hearing from you anyways, and, and maybe we can do this again in a month or so's time, once, you know, things do solidify, and, and there's, there's more to share.
Sure. That sounds good.
I'd just also express my appreciation to both of you, you've been very helpful, anytime we reach out, you're always there and responsive and, and supportive, so I want to express my appreciation as well, thank you.
Great. All right, Mr. Mainz, I'll turn it over to you again, so your, that's your report and your next agenda item.
Okay, so the next agenda item, and I gotta get my.
We're saying goodbye at this point, just.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Take care, have a good night, everyone.
Hey, thank you.
Thanks for all your help. Okay, so the next thing that I had on here was, so we, we talked about the COVID, so the next thing is the superintendent's search update, and I think I will turn that back over to, to you Brett, for, and to Tracy, for, and Becky, for an update on the search process.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna leave this to Becky and Tracy to kind of lead us through.
Um, okay, so Will, we had a search committee meeting last night, it was our first one, we have a search committee of nine individuals, based on sort of the response, we got a good response rate from parents, not so much with non-parent residents, we sort of did a little shift in the layout. So Julie and Tracy and I talked, and our setup now is still nine individuals, but it's myself and Julie, two administrators, Cindy and Neely, two teachers, Mr. Riordan and Ms. Miller from the middle school, and Will Champagne is joining us as well, and two parents, which are Melissa Johnson and Bridgetta Skirko, I think is how you pronounce her last name. So, we had our first, like, orientation training meeting last night, and that went really well, Tracy, I don't know if you wanna fill in on that a little bit?
Yeah, so, I mean, because, just so you all are aware, because this is a committee that is appointed by the school committee to advise the school committee on something that's under the school committee's purview, they are themselves a public body, so they are, they operate under the, the open meeting law, they have all of the requirements of that, even though all of their meetings after last night will be done in executive session. So, it's always important, you, you know, as you all know, school committee members in Massachusetts are required to be trained in open meeting law, along with other things. So, it's always really important, we think, to make sure that your screening committees also have that training. Also, because of what they're doing, they are also bound by the public ethics laws, and they have a confidentiality agreement that they're signing, because all of the information that they'll be gathering, that part of their process is actually entirely confidential. As the committee knows, what you'll be receiving will be the names of the finalists, they'll be doing the initial run. They'll be doing the initial run of reviewing the applicants, having interviews to semifinalists and then deciding who your finalists are. So we started, we did that training last night. They've been returning confidentiality agreements to me. Becky mentioned Will, he had it back to me within half an hour, once again proving that students are always the best members of committees when it comes to getting their assignments done. But they're also, what they're doing right now is brainstorming topics that they want to make sure are covered during the interview process. They'll be getting those to me over the course of the week and then they'll be putting together the questions. And I'll be working particularly with Becky and Julie to to then essentially organize a thoughtful interview. As you all know, the application is out there. It's posted. I don't remember that I've ever seen an application process that's been this active this early. As you might remember me saying before, superintendent applicants are notorious for leaving it to the last minute. We usually get about half of them on the last day. And we already have, I just checked, we have seven, which this early on is a really good time. And I also know that there's other, I spoke with my executive director today, he had received a phone call about it. I've spoken to some other people about it as well, so. There definitely is interest out there. So I think perhaps ironically, by virtue of the kind of year we're having, you may end up with a with a good number of applicants and also you've got, you have, you have good prospects, I would say. So that is where we're at this point. I don't want to talk any longer than necessary, but I'm happy to take questions or turn it back over to Becky for other things that I might have forgotten to say.
So I did see the Mass Massachusetts Association of Superintendents newsletter today and it was posted in the newsletter today as well, so it's it's, and I know it was posted on on the the school committee website as well, the Mass Association of School Committees. So it's definitely out there and and I was surprised to see it in the the superintendent's newsletter today, but it was, it was there.
Yeah, MASC is very good about picking up our stuff almost right away, so we definitely get, it definitely makes a difference when they're, when they share things.
Becky, anything else on that? I guess maybe just really quick, what what your next steps are right now? Did we just refresh our memories?
Right, so they, the screening committee all has essentially an assignment of of putting together the topics for the interview and then we'll be organizing that and sending it back out to them so that they can then create the interview questions and we'll essentially then put the interview together. Just so the committee is aware, this is parallel to the process that we'll walk through when we do this with finalists of what topics do you want to cover? Who's going to write those questions and then putting it together? Of course, you'll be, your process is entirely public. The applications close on the eighth, which is next Friday. So you still have over a week left of those. And once the applications have closed, I will go through them, make sure that everything is as it should be. And the screening committee will receive electronically from me access to those applications. And they have the assignment of reviewing them over that weekend on the ninth and the 10th. Then we have a meeting scheduled for the evening of the 11th. They will be reviewing the applications together, deliberating on who they want to bring in as semifinalist interviews. And then I'll be scheduling those interviews over the course of that following week. After the final interview, they'll be deliberating on who they then want to put forward as finalists to you all. And then I'll need to work with you and with the other members as to when you want to, either when your next meeting is scheduled or when you want to be scheduling a meeting to receive that. And then, once the finalists are public, I'll be needing to work with all of you and also with the finalists. And I do mean all of you because this will involve, certainly involve the school administration as well. For the committee, as many as are possible, to do a remote visitation to the 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 districts of the finalists and then for the finalists to be doing a remote visit with Douglas. We can, that that usually at least involves staff, but if you want to try to figure out how to do it with public, we can do that too. And then you will then be interviewing your finalists. And again, the plan here is to try to have all of this wrapped up by the first week of June.
Thank you. No, I thank, you know, all of you, Becky, Julie, Tracy, for just acting on this so quickly and having us in such good position from where we were two weeks, less than two weeks ago, I think, you know, so that's, I'm amazed.
I would like to also apologize slash thank you to everybody who I sent emails to. I'm I'm sending a lot of emails, so I'm sorry.
You gotta do it.
Thank you for your photographs and responses and and everything. Courtney on her personal day was sending me numbers and everything for our profile page, so it really, I really appreciate it and thank you.
Yes, if you, actually, I should have sent it out to, I I believe that the committee has all seen it, but I should have sent out to all of you. The 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 brochure that was put together, which is what all of you were contributing to, you can find right off of the MASC website under superintendent searches, but I can email it to Brett if he wants to share it with all of you. Which does have, you know, it is much richer for having accurate budget information and the appropriate titles and also having photos. The photos, we feel like really add something to it. And also, there was a lot of scrambling to rewrite the community profile and make sure all of that was done. So that's, you know, that's obviously kind of you're putting yourself out there and saying this is who we are and and you want to come here. So any of you who who contributed to that, that absolutely makes a difference.
Thank you. Anyone else on the committee or anyone else here having other questions, comments on our superintendent search?
Real quickly, Brett, was that I was talking with a friend of mine, an old coaching friend and he explained that he was in the search for a superintendent's position and that he had just got finished with the virtual site visits and that it was, it was an interesting experience doing it this way as opposed to going to the, going to the schools themselves and being seen and so forth, but it does work, so it's it's not, it's not optimal, but but I'm sure that the committee will make it work.
Yes, yeah, and you're also, I mean, you should know, you're not the only ones that are doing this. Situate just made a decision this past week. Shashin Tech just made a decision this past week, so while it is, as Mr. Mainz said, less than optimal, it is something that that you're not alone in, so.
Okay, and I did have one other question, Tracy and Becky or Julie. Some teachers did reach out and they were wondering if if they were, if you guys were still receiving and reviewing surveys. Of course, they got the information a little bit late in the process. I know that a lot, a lot of people did reply. I I was wondering if there are in fact are still more surveys coming in. I know that they, the teachers did find out about it pretty close to the closing and if they, if they may not have done it right away, I encourage them to to still submit it, so that you would have the information.
Yeah, so they wouldn't be able to now because the survey's closed, because I needed to do that to do the calculations. What I would say though is that, and I, I would certainly encourage the committee to consider this. As we go through, this is going to seem very quiet, I would say, and luckily because, honestly, because our time period is shorter, it's going to be less of a quieter period than it usually is. Usually, once it goes to the search committee, it it kind of goes silent from a public perspective because all of that's an executive session. And then it kind of splashes back out again once the finalists are approved or come or announced. The, for the the district personnel and also for the town, if they haven't sort of essentially answered, I mean, I always say the sort of the three big questions are, what's working well? What could you be doing more of? What could you be, what could be stronger? And what is the need for leadership in the district right now? I think that that having those questions be answered by anyone who is relevant and either sending that to me or sending it to the chair is is never a bad idea. The other thing that I would say, Mr. Mainz, the answer to your question is that we'll want to make sure that the staff really feels like they have a chance to meet the finalists. And then something that the committee will want to consider is how they want to receive feedback from the site visits. So when the finalists are actually visiting virtually Douglas in various ways, how do you want to hear back from people? And then one thing that we've been doing since we've been doing the remote ones is in some cases, we're actually putting a survey together then for that, saying, here's the context in which I met them and so forth. So we were having a conversation, I I think I was having a conversation with Becky earlier this week about, you know, kind of where are the places people can weigh in again? And I think that 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 is something else for the community to be aware of, is that once those visits are happening, it is entirely appropriate for the committee to then be asking for feedback about the finalist. So certainly, they can, you know, send, send me things. None of you should feel like you need to hold back in terms of sharing my contact information. But the other thing is that there's again, and a sort of another round of this once we get to the finalists. Thanks for raising that. I wasn't aware, that that's a good thing to know. We definitely want to make sure staff feels like they're tuned in.
Um, Tracy, if I could just add on to that, I know that in our last meeting, we had discussed the idea of having one admin and then from one building and then having teachers fill out from the others. So hopefully, I've sort of clarified a little bit why we wanted to keep the number manageable enough, especially you can see in a Zoom meeting, we've got what, four, eight, 12? You know, it it can get unwieldy, I think, so we wanted to sort of stick with the nine. We had a really good parent response. So we did end up with the group that we did, I think, having Cindy as an admin from the primary school. I know she has a great relationship with the teachers there, but there's not a teacher from the primary school in the group, and there is not a teacher from the elementary school in that group. I have a lot of faith in the admins and teachers that we do have in the in the committee. But also, I, if this is okay, Tracy, I am certainly open to receiving emails from any, from any teachers, but also, you know, especially given that we don't have teachers from the elementary school and primary school as the committee this week especially is thinking about what topics we want to target and what questions we want to ask. If there's something from that perspective that you you think could be missed because you didn't get a chance to fill out the survey or because it's just sort of not in the same atmosphere that's being dealt with at the middle school and high school, then I think feel free to reach out to me and that's fine.
That's great. No, I think that's, that's a, that's a very appropriate, and also you're, it's valuable to be reminding people as well that the committee is intentionally set up to sort of have those different voices coming in. So if people feel comfortable reaching out to you, if they feel comfortable reaching out to their own school administrator or their their colleague who is sitting on the committee, and of course, also you've appointed the the president of your, of your local to the committee as well. So there's a couple of different directions that people could be approaching that from. And that's certainly, by the way, is true of of the principals who are here and of the other staff members as well, that that you're, that there is an intent for them to be represented on the committee.
I think when we did the last, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I think when we did the last search, I remember sending out, Mr. Mainz, it just involved you, because I remember a huge amount of papers being passed, getting information on you, and I feel like it might have been the other finalist. But I think at the end, once we had three people, we might have asked, is that traditionally how, something like that might work, where we get other people's inputs before we go in vote based on just the main finalists, not on everybody, but on the finalists. But we could also do that too and take into consideration, you know, people's opinions on things.
Yep, and that might be something you want to do once you've done the 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 site visits in both directions. That way, more people have actually had a direct experience of some kind with with each of them.
Okay. Anything else on on this topic? Okay. Great, so.
We have a really great group of people on the search committee and I'm very thankful for everybody that has stepped up. I think
No, that's good. I know you had to turn away some some other good parent candidates as well, so I think the response was good. That was nice to see.
Brett, can I ask a question in regards to what Becky was referring to? If we didn't have teachers from my building or from the elementary, is that something you want me to send out to them in giving them that option to give me topics or show concerns or do, or send them to you? How would you recommend we deal with that?
I think that personally, I think it would be fine either way. I think I understand what Kevin is saying and and that was partly like me not noticing that, you know, my brain not recognizing that the one call really goes to families and to parents, but that, you know, we had to target non-school families. Also, we did that online and, you know, so I do think that the staff got a short period of time to check out the survey. So I certainly wouldn't be opposed to, if Cindy, it makes sense to, and Mr. Bell, if it makes sense to send out an email and say if you didn't get to, and it could be all all the principals or Mr. Mainz, either way. If you didn't get a chance to fill out the survey, there's particular, those, what was it, things we're doing well on, things that we could improve on and then other.
Well, and what do you, what is the the district need in terms of leadership right now?
Right.
Going forward.
Right, and I think that obviously, this is a very unique time, so what the district may have needed in the past couple of years. Like, maybe priorities are shifting, like Representative McKenna was saying with the news, you know, one minute we care about education and now we care about policies. Yeah, I think there's nothing wrong with sending something out and then we get a chance to have those questions in mind when we're actually formulating what we want to ask the semifinal.
Well, for that too, so if there's teachers, like, because we have some admin from different buildings, teachers from different buildings. At the end of the day, the teachers also, because they're also being represented by the DTA too, they tend to talk amongst themselves if there's certain concerns. They may share similar concerns, just like admin from different buildings may, you know, get together, so, you know, absolutely. Or, you know, everybody talking amongst themselves, so, and we do have representation
Right.
From the elementary school, just in a different capacity. So every school is, is being represented in some way, shape or form.
Yes.
Yeah, so Mr. Mainz.
Sorry, I was just going to say, I wonder if it would be most efficient then, just for Mr. Mainz to send out an email to all of the school employees and say, the process is underway. If you have any additional thoughts or you didn't have a chance to fill out the survey and you want the search committee to have specific things in mind, you can reach out to your building principal, to the DTA, to Mr. Mainz. Whatever method seems fine.
And and I'm I'm very confident that, knowing the the members of the DTA, that with two members of their executive board on your committee, they'll, they'll, they will reach out to them and and share their ideas as well. I don't think they'll be hesitant to do so, so. And again, I, I didn't mean to stir up one of those, I think they I will, I will send that out tomorrow morning.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if if folks are interested in anonymity, I guess. Tracy, would you be open to having folks contact you directly with feedback?
Absolutely.
You know, if somebody's
Nope, that would be great.
Things to say, I didn't feel comfortable sending it directly to someone either.
No, that, and that actually can be
The better option.
I agree, and that actually can be a really useful, essentially, sort of position to put me in. Because sometimes people feel more comfortable telling somebody from outside the district, and I'm always absolutely happy to, so share myself on
Maybe that should be the primary option, but they should also feel free to to send it to you, Becky, I guess. Probably the best options, you know, you'll both be part of the search committee, so. So rather than having it go to Mr. Bell and then Mr. Bell having it defeated through, just, I think if it comes to one of you, that's probably the most efficient way.
Right, and if I, if I could just ask Tracy, give me the three, the three points again for terms of leadership needs, there were two other issues as well.
What is going particularly well in the district right now and what are the things the district most needs to work on right now?
Very good.
This is essentially a strengths and weaknesses. Yep.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for, and actually, and I mean it, by the way, thank you for bringing that up because I I think that, I think that people tend to feel a little more tapped in and tuned in when they're at least in the buildings and with everybody not being able to have even that much connection. I think any additional outreach we can do is 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 good to do and useful to do.
I'll get this out tomorrow morning.
Great.
Okay, anything else on our superintendent search? No, anything else on the superintendent search? No, okay. Great, well, thank you for joining us again, Tracy.
Of course, and like I said, if things come up, if people have questions, please get in touch with me.
Will do.
Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Mainz, anything else on your report?
That, that was it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So next up, we have our school committee and subcommittee report, our accounts payable report.
Okay, just have one. Actually, I didn't count batches. I think there was four. In the total, it was on 4232020 and the total was $102,503.3. In the total, it was on four twenty-three, twenty, twenty, and the total was hundred and two thousand five hundred dollars and three cents.
Okay. That's great. Okay. Any questions, comments on that from anyone? Okay, seeing none, move on to our consent agenda. Bit of a big one this evening. So first up, we had our April twentieth two thousand twenty meeting minutes. I do not see any issues with it myself going through it. I know we talked about a lot though, so it looked okay to me. They wouldn't have many amendments to that particular set of meeting minutes. If we don't have any amendments, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the April twentieth, two thousand twenty school committee meeting minutes.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion from Lisa.
Second.
And second from Kelly. Okay. Any other discussion on the April twentieth meeting minutes? Okay, look for a roll call vote. I'll go last.
Lisa Brown, aye.
Becky Charniak, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Julie, you're muted, it looks like. You're still there.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Okay, and Brett Argel, aye. So motion passes. Okay, next up, we have payment of school department employees through six thirty, two thousand twenty. Ms. Keegan, you want to speak on this? Or I know you suggested some motion language, so. We lose Miss Kagan. So I'm looking for a language again.
Sorry about that.
No worries.
Um, now, what was I saying? Yes. I did want to let you know some good news is that, I don't know if you recall, the governor had had asked the DLS to actually provide guidance with regard to who could work and who couldn't work and what they could do.
Okay.
So, you know, unfortunately for a little bit there, the custodians could only do a few certain things, but now they are back to work in full force starting today. Allowed to do many of the things that we need to get done.
Great.
Obviously with the proper, you know, the mask and the gloves and, you know, separation and all that, so we're very, very happy about that. I just wanted to let everyone know that.
That's great. Thank you.
But other than that, no, and I just did it through six thirty. You know, it's really more of just a, you know, not even sure it's really necessary, but I think we've been doing it since this whole thing started, to be honest with you. Talking with through six thirty, you know, everybody has been working, as everybody knows, you know, we've got paras, ABA's are working, teachers are working, everybody's working, whether they're working from home or working in there. You know, so, but it is an odd situation, so unprecedented, uncharted, as we've been saying. So I was thinking we do it right through six thirty because they have closed school. And when I prepared this, we had the situation with the custodians where they weren't allowed to do a lot of their duties, and that wasn't, had nothing to do with our school district, and it wasn't a Douglas thing. This was throughout the whole state of Massachusetts. But luckily that's changed, but I think it would still be behoove us to just go ahead and do it anyway. So unless anybody has any issues with that.
Any questions, comments, issues in regards to, all right, so I'll read off the motion then and just look for a so moved from someone if you are so inclined. So I moved that the school committee approved payment of salaries and wages for all regular employees of Douglas Public Schools. Even, I guess this is due to the coronavirus COVID nineteen health emergency, I would say during the coronavirus health emergency. For hourly employees, they will be paid their regularly scheduled hours with the school department. Regular employees is defined as those who have been appointed by the superintendent of schools for a specific ongoing position with assigned regularly occurring hours. This does not include any day-to-day staff. This approval is for the period beginning Monday, May fourth, two thousand twenty through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, which is the end of the fiscal year. Further votes may or may not be necessary going forward as the situation may change with guidance from the state or federal government as the situation evolves.
So moved.
Motion from Becky.
Second. Second.
Second from Lisa. Any other discussion on this now?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes. You muted yourself again.
Okay, I have a question. And I don't mean to sound mean about this by any means, so don't take it the wrong way, but what are other communities doing as far as like this employee, like in the real world, outside of schools and government and stuff like that, if people aren't working, they're filing for unemployment. So if people actually legitimately aren't working, why are we not telling them that they should file for unemployment? Is there a reason for that?
Well, currently, we don't have anybody that is not working. I mean, as we know, we're doing a lot of, you know, remote teaching, remote learning. We've already spoken about that many, many times. People are working from home or working from the home and the office. For instance, I work at home a lot. I go in once a week as far as to the office, work in the office anywhere from five to ten hours. But I also work at home anywhere from eight to eleven hours a day, so, or all the way again. It's been happening a lot of them before, so, I'm sorry.
But I think it's like the elderly people, not necessarily like somebody that is working like you, but like you were saying, examples of people that might not be actually doing work. I mean.
So the only, the only situation Julie, we had was for a short period of time there because of the governor making DLS in charge of what people were allowed to do. There was a short period of time there where custodians could not do all of the duties that they would customarily do. They were doing building checks and things of that nature, but there was a lot of things that they weren't allowed to do. But that has been, they have been turned over. In fact, I immediately did write to the, this particular lady at the DLS, and I kind of questioned it, but very, very carefully, professionally, and nicely. But didn't hear back from her, and it was kind of strange because right when I forwarded my email back to her again, within an hour, there was a reversal of that whole opinion. So I'm thinking that statewide, there was a lot of pushback on that. But as I did say, starting today, they're back full time, working at the schools.
And everybody else is working, and not just our teachers, our paraprofessionals are checking in with students, our counselors, our adjustment counselors, our office staff.
Yeah. And there's a lot of things that have to be done. I mean, even secretaries for the principals, you know, there's scheduling, there's purchase orders, there's working on the budget or student activity funds or, you know, doing various administrative duties for the principals. There's a lot of things going on, Julie, that, you know, I mean, and we might be working from home or a combination thereof, but there's a lot of work going on. It is very unfortunate that there are some people out there, and so I'm kind of glad you brought it up, that have this mistaken notion that because the buildings, the brick and mortar might be empty, but our school department in the learning, in the continuity of learning, and all the administrative duties are all taking place, nothing has changed. In fact, in some ways, like I said, there's more work, and I think Kevin can attest to this and some others, there's a lot more work now for me than there has been ever in the past.
It's legitimately fair discussion because it is something that has been brought up because, like I said, other people are filing for unemployment if they're truly not working, but I think that that's a fair explanation.
But also, but I am glad you brought it up. And also, one of the other things, and I believe Brett, it was you that brought it up at one of our prior meetings, is that one of the, I don't know if the continuously is the right words, but with regard to the federal funding, the whole idea is to keep people working in order to qualify for that funding. And it is correct that there are some private businesses that are laying people off, but that doesn't mean all of them are. It's not a, this is not a one-size-fits-all situation. There's, there are a lot of businesses that are tapping into their reserves and they're keeping their employees. There are a lot of businesses now that are doing furloughs instead of layoffs. And when was the last time we even heard the word furlough? Right? Another thing, and that was to maintain so that they can maintain their health insurance benefits. I do, I firmly believe that even in the private sector, that a lot of businesses, to the extent possible, are trying to keep their employees employed to the extent that is possible. And I firmly believe that when they do have to furlough and lay off their employees, that it's a heartbreaking thing for them to do, a very heartbreaking thing for any owner of any business to do to those employees. And I think I really do firmly believe that they would try to hang on to them if they could.
Yeah, to be honest with you, I actually.
Thank you for asking.
I'm gonna say, I actually wondered if some employees would be better off being furloughed because of the boost on unemployment, the six hundred dollar extra on unemployment, but again, I don't think we have any situations where, again, it just applies to us because we've found kind of roles for everyone to do to keep us going, so.
And another point that I know I brought up before though, and again, Julie, I thank you for asking the question, you know, because a lot of people out there, you know, what you understand, don't don't understand all of these mechanics and things, but there's also net school spending requirements. And we have to meet ninety-five percent of net school spending requirements, or the town loses revenue from the state, like chapter seventy. So, you know, that's another part of it as well. And as you know, at minimum, eighty-four percent of our budget is salaries and wages, so.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Keegan. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
No. So I think we have a motion and a second already. Any other discussion? Okay, look for a roll call vote.
Lisa Brown, aye.
Becky Charniak, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Brett Argel, aye. That covers that. Okay. Next up, we have acceptance and approved executive session meeting minutes. And we have numerous dates here, and this is, I apologize to the public. So this is something we haven't been great at, but we promise to get better at going forward. These are basically our executive session meeting minutes with regards to negotiations with Mr. Mainz to stay on for the FY twenty-one school year. This is a partial, a partial list of those executive session meetings. They cover the dates October second two thousand nineteen, October sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, November sixth, two thousand nineteen, November twentieth, two thousand nineteen, and December eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. I believe that covers all of them from previous year, and we should have a few more for next week to close that matter out from this year, from two thousand twenty. Okay. So I did read through all of these, and I did not see any issue with them. Not sure if anyone else sees any issues with those. And because this matter is a closed matter now, we've moved on with a superintendent search now. These meetings are both being approved and released into public record at this point. Any amendments, questions, comments, anything on those?
Yeah, that's good. Me too.
Okay. Thank you. So I guess we'll do them at a time. It's gonna take a little time, but I think it's probably the right thing to do. So I'm looking for a motion to accept, approve, and release into public record the executive session meeting minutes for the Douglas School Committee from October second, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
A motion from Kelly.
Second.
Second from Becky. Any other discussion on that matter? Okay, if not, I'll look for a roll call vote.
Lisa Brown, aye.
Becky Charniak, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Brett Argel, aye. Okay. Our next one, I'll be looking for a motion to approve and release into public record the executive session meeting minutes for the Douglas School Committee from October sixteenth, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Motion from Kelly.
Second.
From Becky. Any other discussion? Okay. Roll call vote.
Lisa Brown, aye. Becky Charniak, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Hold, aye.
And Brett Argel, aye. Okay, next, I'm looking for a motion to approve and release to public record the executive session meeting minutes for the Douglas School Committee from November sixth, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Motion from Becky.
Second.
Second from Kelly. Other discussion on it? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Lisa Brown, aye.
Becky Charniak, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
And Brett Argel, aye. Maybe looking for a motion to approve and release to public record the executive session meeting minutes for the Douglas School Committee from November twentieth, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Motion from Becky.
Second.
Second from Kelly. Any other discussion? If not, I'll look for a roll call vote.
Lisa Brown, aye.
Becky Charniak, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Brett Argel, aye. And lastly, on executive session, I'll be looking for a motion to approve and release to public record the executive session meeting minutes for the Douglas School Committee from December eighteenth, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Motion from Kelly.
Second.
Second from Becky. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Lisa Brown, aye.
Becky Charniak, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
And Brett Argel, aye. Okay, thank you all. That covers our executive session meeting minutes. So now I've even individually been a worse meeting minute person. So I have budget subcommittee meeting minutes dating back to December of two thousand eighteen, yeah. So we have December thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, February twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, March twelfth, two thousand nineteen, May first, two thousand nineteen, August sixth, two thousand nineteen, October twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, January fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, and I'm sorry, two thousand twenty old years, and April fifteenth, two thousand twenty. That's a lot. I know we probably should do these individually, but I'm gonna, you know, we're so late with these anyways, I'm gonna look to do this in block. So anyone disagree with that?
Nope.
Okay. So I'm gonna look for a motion to accept, approve, and release to public record the budget subcommittee meeting minutes for the Douglas School Committee for the following dates: December thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, February twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, March twelfth, two thousand nineteen, May first, two thousand nineteen, August sixth, two thousand nineteen, October twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, January fifteenth, two thousand twenty, and April fifteenth, two thousand twenty.
So moved.
A motion from Lisa.
Second.
And second from Kelly. Any discussion on the matter?
So all we're doing is just voting to release them, right?
Approved and released, yep. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote?
Lisa Brown, aye.
Becky Charniak, Epstein.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
And Brett Argel, aye. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. So we will look to bring the rest of our executive session meeting minutes forward next week and get that wrapped up, okay? Next up on our agenda, school business and operation manager's report. Ms. Keegan.
Yes, I first want to apologize that I have not provided a general fund budget report to you in a little bit, I guess with all the getting caught up and things. So for the next meeting, I'll be sure to have that to you and, you know, some of the other reports that I customarily provide. I did give you a little bit of a heads up about our balances being lower than, you know, all of them, lower than we, you know, have anticipated. And for those on the school committee that may not be aware, even our general fund balance is lower this year even now than it has been in the past five years. And we have already surpassed the one point two four six million in school choice that we budgeted for the FY twenty budget. So that's another issue too. And with regard to the school choice, just to remind everyone that we had just under eighty thousand dollars in unanticipated repairs that absolutely had to get done. The town did say that they were going to possibly fund some of that, you know, going forward, but I, you know, Kevin and I did discuss this, and I don't really feel at this time that, you know, it would be proper, for lack of other words, to be requesting funds from the town for that at this point.
Yeah, I wouldn't anticipate.
You know, yeah.
I think the last I heard, I don't think they're even gonna do a, I'm sorry, what's the infrastructure, but.
Yeah, capital. No.
Capital. I don't think they're gonna do any capital, except for absolute necessities in FY twenty-one.
But this wasn't even capital. This was.
No, I guess, yeah.
Right, right, right. But either way, we really just could not see asking them. I mean, we're all in the same kind of difficult situation, townwide now. So, and we also did, as you'll recall, we did do some funding from school choice in Chromebooks as well. So, but, you know, as you know, we are working on the FY twenty-one budget. The administrative team is working very hard on that right now to look at reductions, to bring it down to a kind of a figure that we have right now, even though we don't have a figure from the town yet, but at least to get some, a good amount of work done on the reductions. Possible reductions coming up, and also taking a look at projections for year imbalances as well, although it is a little bit difficult because we have a lot of unknowns that we have, well, I have anyway, constant Zoom meetings with DESC about how to handle every single financial situation now because every. because everything is different and unprecedented and, you know, all that, so. But um, you know, we're all working very hard on the FY20, in the FY21 and we'll be providing some information very soon to the school committee.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I, I guess I can cover this either under, under your report or topics not anticipated, but um, at the Water Selectmen's meeting last night, they did have a discussion with the finance committee about what to do with the FY21 budget as well as um, the town meeting. Um, they did not come to um, a conclusion on that discussion. It, it was leaning towards moving the annual town meeting out to September along with, you know, setting a budget, which means we would operate under a 1/12 budget scenario for July and August at the very least in that case. Um, but they ended up leaving the meeting as, let's, let's regroup on May 19th or somewhere in there. Uh, other towns, others, yes, May 19th, they're gonna regroup on that just to see um, if they have any guidance from the state by that point. Um, so the two issues with, we're moving out are, we don't have guidance from the state, states, and how are we gonna set a budget that really means anything? And we don't wanna get a town full of people in the high school auditorium to hold a public hearing or a public annual town meeting. Um, so, but the way this thing is going, you know, ma- maybe things clear up in two, three weeks and they're able to target a June deadline, a, a June town meeting. Other towns around us have set the, their annual town meetings for later in June, um, at this point. Whether they end up getting postponed, I don't know, but for at least now, they've moved them out from May to the, the June 22nd, 23rd timeframe. Um, the other thing that came up was that, you know, that, again, they're, you know, we talked about earlier, the, the revenue picture at the state level is dire. Um, the town manager is planning that to impact our, our local budgets. He's, you know, looking to hold salaries um, flat to, since that we can, to be, you know, he's at, you know, he said it publicly, he's like, you're asking our collective bargaining units to hold salaries flat until we can get a budget set. Um, if, even if it's in September and that would, you know, really essentially mean no steps in, no colas at that point. Um, also talked about, you know, possibly having to, you know, work with just our, our net school spending number for, for schools, which, you know, that might be a slight increase over last year, but that's really gonna depend on where chapter 70 ends up coming in at for net school spending. Um, we have a, we have a net school spending minimum right now, but that's based on a chapter 70 number that could change. Um, so that, that net school spending minimum could change as well. Um, but that's, that's the grim reality that, that we're facing. So I think the work that the, the administration is doing currently um, to get us to a um, a budget that'll be 1% over FY20 is, is valuable. Um, I fear that you may need to go further with that, but I think um, you know, at, at least this is the, kind of ripping the bandaid off slow, I guess. We gotta get in, getting it that far and then seeing where that leaves us. And then if we find out that we have to go further, you know, we deal with that, you know, bridge when we get to it.
Yes, it is. It's an awful lot of work, Brett, to actually do any, you know, the reductions. It is a lot of work, so.
Yes, yeah.
Really good thing to do that now, get a lot of that bulk work done and then, you know, go accordingly from, from that point forward.
Yep.
Brett, just for the committee's information, we did meet as a, as an admin team yesterday and literally met for about two and a half hours to go through uh, what we initially proposed and to be looking at with a critical eye, what, what changes might need to happen. So we did, we have made a lot of headway on that. Um, and um, we're, we're, we're working towards meeting that uh, that at least, at least getting to the point where the 1% that you mentioned uh, being, being in that ballpark for sure. And then we'll have to adjust from there. But we did do a lot of work yesterday. I thank the admin team for their, their work and we're gonna continue to work on the next couple of days.
No, I, I appreciate that and um, it just, I don't know, it breaks my heart that we're in this position. I know it's, it's not easy on you, um, all of you having to, to just talk through, you know, what, what that, what that's gonna mean for the, for the school district. Um, we, we do, you know, we did talk about, um, and we have on our schedule for your upcoming school meetings, moving our public hearing out to June 4th. I think that's probably still an appropriate timeframe um, at this point, even if the town were to hold a, a late June um, annual town meeting and have a budget, June 4th feels right. Um, I think we can make a decision, you know, in the next, you know, couple of weeks. We need to get at least two weeks notice to get that into the paper.
Well, we already, we already, it's already going in.
Okay, but if we do decide to postpone it, we just gotta repost it, right?
But the thing is Brett, um, it is with any other year, even if this was a golden year. Um, you know, from, say, we, we did have an appropriation figure from the town and say, we did have it.
Yeah, I guess, okay.
Nothing wrong with holding a public hearing and at least, and at that public hearing, of course, again, unprecedented, uncharted. We could certainly go through, um, you know, where we were, what we brought it down to. We don't have a figure out this time, but we wanted to let the public know, because it's a public hearing. Um, we're seeing right now with our budget, but certainly to let the public know as well that there could very well be changes to this budget. And that's happened every year. Every year, we have to make changes to our budget, so.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm less concerned with moving it because of lack of guidance and, and more for, I, I still haven't got any guidance on how to, how to pull the public hearing.
Oh, right, that part of it, right, right, right.
So I, I think that was the other part. I'm thinking that it might, it might need to move.
Yeah, no problem Brett. If, if that happens, then you're, you're absolutely correct. We'll, we'll just advertise. We just didn't wanna have it. Folks, we have to know how to have it, so.
No, I, I think you're doing the right thing by, by getting it out there.
Okay, that's the least of our problems, right?
Okay. And just, and other things, topics not anticipated, um, you know, just watching the news this week and everyone's coming up with their, their, their reopening committees or reopening advisory committees and, you know, I, I don't know, you know, something we put in agenda for next week to discuss this or if you guys wanna cover as an admin team, you know, in the meantime. You know, is it worth us Douglas having a, how, how do we get back to normal committee? And, and start talking about that? So.
Well, I mean, I, I don't.
I know we're far, we're far from there, but um, you know, but at least start kind of putting down some of the lessons learned over the last few weeks and, you know.
My sense would be July would probably be the time that you can probably get started with that a little bit. We can talk a little bit about it in June if you wanted to, I think as well, but um, in earnest, I think that we talked about this at the admin meeting just recently, just yesterday, was that, you know, we really start thinking about and we, we, once we started talking about it, to be honest with you, there were so, every, everything we talked about, we, we only, all we did was create more questions as to how we're gonna make that all happen. So it's, it's really gonna be a, a, a large undertaking. But we also need Brett, with regards to that, we need some guidance from the state, uh, from the CDC and, and expectations as to, you know, what, what we can and what we can't do before we can really determine it. For example, we, we talked about setting up a room, uh, Jeff Colette had set up a room at the high school and tried to um, mimic the six feet of separation and the maximum number of desks you could get in there was 20. And you know, there are quite a number of, you know, classes that have many more than 20. And the same would be uh, for the elementary and primary schools, it'll be, it'll be a challenge. So I think you'll need some guidance as to whether or not we're gonna have to, you know, the commissioner even mentioned recently possibility in September, coming back and having alternative day schedules where certain kids come in one day and certain kids come in another day and it rotates because you just can't have that many students in the classrooms. That this, there's so many unknowns. I, I think your point is well taken and I think it's gonna have to be a collective uh, 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 assembly of, of stakeholders. But, but we're also gonna need some, to really, really solid information from the DC, the CDC and the border healths and, and all those groups as well.
Okay, tha- thank you for that. I'm, I'm glad you're already considering some things and I, I've heard the whole, you know, how do, how do you keep six feet, you know, distance in a classroom and that stuff? And I just, again, it hurts my head, um, thinking about it. Um, but I guess I, I would, you know, maybe ask that, you know, as even if you're setting up the budget to give some considerations to how additional sanitizing of buildings could impact the budget and things like that. So again, if it sounds like you guys are already talking about these things, maybe you don't need a separate committee on it, but to factor in how reopening next year, you know, is, are there additional expenses? Are, are there types of machines we need to buy? It's, you know, I've, I've seen these vaporizer machines that clean, you know, areas and stuff like that. Do we need to be purchasing that stuff? I, I don't know. So just, yeah.
We, we actually talked about that as well.
Can I just ask, has there any been discussion on like what's actually gonna happen with buses too?
Yeah.
We, we, we talked about that a little bit. Are they gonna have to, you know, by doing alternate days, they would, they'd be able to space enough better in the buses as well. I mean, it, it, this could be, this could be very radical in, in the way in which school comes back in, in September, really could be.
I know when I was in, um, I think it was a fifth grade in Franklin, I was 10 years old and I'm not recommending this, but I'm just saying. They had um, double sessions. So I actually went to fifth grade and I, I, in the second session, and I didn't get home until six o'clock at night.
Oh.
So they had double sessions. They had so many, such an influx, they couldn't build schools fast enough. There's no way they had enough room for all of us students. The town grew so fast in such a short period of time, they, they had to do that.
But even if you're doing that, you know, you're trying to, you're trying to have a session in the morning and then sanitize your building and then have another session.
Oh, I know, and then the busing, double busing, you know, yeah.
It's just crazy.
Yeah.
Okay.
But Brett, I did have a couple of other things for the committee for topics not anticipated that we, we, we really need to get on the docket and will be on the docket for next week. Um, we haven't, we haven't revisited pre-K um, in, in whether or not fees are, are gonna continue to be charged. Um, we really should talk about that next week. We had mentioned previously, uh, but we didn't know what was gonna happen with the spring season, but now we know what is gonna happen with the spring season. We should talk about um, the stipends that are listed in, in our spring, uh, spring sports next week and make a decision on that. And also, I've mentioned that we had talked with the DTA a little bit, uh, myself with, with Kevin Redden on um, coming to an, an agreement on the evaluation process as well. So those are things that we will need to talk about uh, on May 6th and probably take a vote on, on pre-K and stipends and maybe even on, on the evaluation tool if we can come to a consensus with um, uh, the DTA on the document. I, and I sent it to you just a little while ago Brett, that has, it has sort of a, an outlay for it, so uh, that's all in there. But just, the, the, so the committee's aware that we'll need to make some decisions next week on those.
All right. So um, you mentioned May 6th and it's actually gonna be May 7th. I sent out an email to everyone. We, we've run into a, a conflict with the, um, the town Zoom account.
Oh.
I, I thought I included you Courtney, I apologize if I didn't.
Oh no, you probably did. I, we just get a lot more emails than we ever used to.
I understood, yeah. So um, yeah, so we, we run into um, conflicts with the town's Zoom account. They can only handle one Zoom meeting at a time. Some other groups have gotten to the Wednesday evenings um, already. I'm on a, so Thursdays were wide open, so um, I had, I had us go ahead and book those. And any, any reason that we can't have it on Thursdays, again, I figure everyone's calendars are pretty wide open right now, so I didn't hesitate with doing that. Um, so we are looking at Thursdays for the next three weeks, May 7th, May 21st and June 4th.
You're right, thank you, yep.
Yeah, so um, we should look at, you know, even booking out further. I know it's, you know, it'd be the, kind of the responsibility of, of the committee. When do we usually set our calendar? Is it uh, for the year, for the, like our ongoing calendar?
Yeah, that's, that's one of those things that we'll probably, we would probably have taken care of at this point.
Yeah, so we should put that on for.
Put together a proposal for it, yeah.
Yeah, for next week. And you know, I know it's, it's been traditionally on Wednesdays, at least the last several years. I don't know that it has to stay there. I know there's probably some good reasons why it is on Wednesdays, but you know, we should at least discuss, you know, do we wanna move to different nights? And I don't, I don't know. So, but, but then setting out the calendar for the next, you know, 12, 12 months on when you're gonna hold meetings.
I, I'll ask Lauren uh, to put that together for just the Wednesdays that we normally would use and then we can always discuss and, and, and if we wanna change to a different date, we could come up.
Yeah, I would say if, if she could also even, you know, maybe booked for Wednesday for us out into June. So I think, you know, currently we're at June 4th, the, you know, two weeks later would be June 8th, I guess it'd be June 17th would be the, would be the, the Wednesday, the normal Wednesday, so if we can get that booked as well. Um, and maybe, I know usually first week in July, we're typically off, so we can probably leave that one open, because that'll be July 4th. Just so we have, if we wanna keep it on Wednesdays, we have those dates booked, do not, other, other committees aren't grabbing it. And just for the sake, you know, maybe July 15th, I, I don't know, do we usually just skip the first week and go second week? Or do we, do we go right to the third week when we have it in July? I forget.
We went to the third week.
So it'd be July 22nd in that case, so I'm, I'm getting a little, little ahead of ourselves here, but.
Actually, this year, who knows, you know?
Yeah.
Right, right.
What's gonna happen?
Yeah, and we, we might have, we might end up having more frequently than, than that, but here, at least get those ones booked, but um, yeah. Um, yeah, and Lauren's got, got a new process for kind of, uh, you know, posting meetings and making sure we quick, she requests the Zoom ID at the same time. Or confirms that it's available for us, so. Um, and hopefully it doesn't go out that far, but anyways, I'm, I'm getting, I'm getting punchy now. All right. Executive session, I don't think we need one this evening. Great. If not, it is 8:45 and I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I missed that.
Did Julie make a motion to adjourn? She's on mute still.
Oh yes, okay, sorry. I moved it, we adjourn this meeting.
Okay, motion from Julie.
Second.
Second from Lisa. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll look for a roll call vote then, please.
Lisa Brown, I.
Becky Charniak, I.
Julie Mulder, I.
Okay, Kelly, you're muted.
Kelly Grady, I.
Okay, and Brett Argel, I. Thank you all. Donna, thank you for uh, hosting our Zoom and recording us. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.
Night.
Be safe.